PM, please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
And welcome to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, infinite soul with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I would like to welcome you to this August 18 monthly meeting. Thank you to everyone who's joining us in person and also joining us via the live stream on YouTube. We do not have BTV here tonight. They were unavailable, but it is streaming on our YouTube channel tonight. So it will be also after the meeting, it will be recorded and put up as well. So you can re-watch it. I would like to introduce these committee members and admin in attendance tonight. On my left, I have Mr. Rich Florence, Mrs. Laura Conrad-Laberinto, Mr. Mike Dolan, Mr. Superintendent Swenson, myself, Rachel King, Vice Chair, Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, Dr. Susan Pruwindowski, and Mr. Timothy Fitzgibbons on the far end. I believe Mr. Marrera may not be unavailable tonight, but if not, he will be joining us as well on the right. We also have many admin here. I saw Mr. Powers is in attendance as well as many of the other admin that are in the district. And Mr. Chauncey is helping us with the IT tonight to record this for YouTube. So thank you. Before I move on to the agenda, I just want to preface this meeting with a few words. I know everyone is eagerly anticipating what the mitigation strategies will be for the fall, specifically surrounding masks, and that parents and community members have been quite passionate about this. However, although we will be updating the committee and the public with our current community COVID numbers and mitigation status update during Mr. Swenson's superintendent report, we will not be voting on this matter until next week's special meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August 24 at 7:00 PM here in this lecture hall. This will be the one agenda item that we will focus on. There will be an extended period of public comment at that time. We do wanted to assure that all committee members had up-to-date data from both communities, local health authorities and physicians, as well as any and all current guidelines from DESI so we could make an informed and thoughtful decision. Please know that school committee's goal with the fall reopening is to ensure the health, safety, and education of all 5,000 of our students in the district, and especially getting all of those children back into the classrooms together with their classmates and teachers every single day with the least amount of quarantine and time out of the classroom as possible. The eight of us are all volunteers, and we have all have the best interests of the students in the forefront of all these decisions. We come together with different backgrounds and life experiences and opinions. In the end, we work together to make these decisions. We take this very seriously. So please be respectful of the school committee, the administration, and all of each other in this community as we navigate the next few weeks. Thank you. We will now have public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. I will now open up public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy BEDH, and would ask anyone that wishes to speak to approach the podium and provide your name and address and keep your comments to under three minutes. We also have a school committee forum posted on the website that you can preregister. This is not required since this is an open meeting. Anyone from the public is welcome to speak during that. People that have preregistered, Mrs. McDougall, our recording secretary to my left, has let me know who preregistered, and we will call them up first. After that, anyone that wishes to speak up to those 12 minutes will be asked to come to the podium. If you do not have time during those 12 minutes, we will have another public comment time at the end of the meeting as well, with the same format. That being said, for sign-ups for public comment, I'm opening it up at 7:05. And we have Lori Cullen, who had signed up. If you were here, if you would like to come to the podium, please.
Good evening, Lori Cullen, 50-year-old Willis from Bridgewater, Mass.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm in front of you tonight as a mother, teacher, and concerned community member. At the outset, let me be clear. I'm here tonight in support of a mask mandate to begin in the school year and particularly for younger elementary students who are not yet eligible for a vaccination shot. I'm the mom of three kids, and I know what it means to have children with significant medical challenges. I spent months living in the cardiac ICU at Children's Hospital in Boston with my son Carter, who has a serious heart condition and has needed more than seven surgeries in his short lifetime. My other son is significantly immunocompromised as a result of his psoriatic arthritis diagnosis, which is not managed correctly, can leave him wheelchair-bound. Without a doubt, my children are vulnerable to COVID-19. But the truth is, so are yours. The Delta variant is a game changer for children. Folks often say children aren't impacted by this disease, except they are. More than 400 children have died so far from COVID-19, and children should not be the numerator. More than once, I've had to look a doctor in the eye and ask, will my child survive? My question was always answered based on facts and medicine and science. And now I stand here asking my community the same question. Will my children survive being at school? The answer should continue to be based on the facts of medicine and science, and yet, this decision is not only in the hands of well-educated medical professionals, it instead is also with the community members which we reside. Indeed, as a community, we have a tool to help combat this. It's actually miraculously simple: wear a mask. At no point in time did I inform the pediatric cardiac surgeon on what tool would be best to use in the eight-hour lifesaving procedure for my son. So I do not fully understand why a lifesaving tool, which may be a little simpler because it is a mask, is being looked at as some kind of weapon in our schools right now, and why it is a topic to be decided upon by the members in the community. Please know that we are also no strangers to mental health. With major medical diagnosis, often comes a mental health diagnosis. As a result of my son's mental health, he also needs to return to school. He desperately needs and deserves, like any other child, to benefit from teacher interaction, socialization, and routine outside of the house. After receiving weekly enrol injections, vials of blood being taken monthly, or not knowing when his brother could be going in for his next lifesaving procedure, a mask to him is not what heightens his level of anxiety. Who knows, he could get it and be fine, but I'm not willing to send my son to the start line of a race, blindfolded and his shoes untied. My husband and I are very active in the community, and we love the town of Bridgewater, which is why I truly wonder if you went home tonight and asked your child, Johnny, would you be willing to wear a mask to school? Because your friend's deathland's body does not work like mine or yours, and wearing a mask will keep him safer. I truly believe your child would have no problem with it. Our community support model is vital. If your child has a peanut allergy, we have all collectively agreed to keep our schools peanut-safe. We make sure all sport teams have the proper and up-to-date equipment, and students are kept safe through database technology for attendance. We continue to adjust with the times to keep our students safe. So the question is, why stop now? Lastly, I often hear the words, I totally get it for your situation.
Ms. Cullen.
For these days, my situation is your situation, and you are now part of my solution.
Thank you, Ms. Cullen. I would like to now call George Jackson, please, to the podium, if he's here.
Hello, my name is George Jackson. I live in Bridgewater, 65 Seaton Tower Drive. Thanks for having the opportunity to have us all speak tonight. I know you guys have been doing your due diligence, and there's a ton of work that goes along with this responsibility, not just here, but everywhere this year. So just a little bit about myself. So obviously, I'm a parent of three here, of a kid at each of the three schools, the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. I'm also a teacher as well, as is my wife. And I mean, we could argue for, you know, until the cows come home, about a lot of stuff, about this efficacy of masks, parental rights, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just trying to still look at this through the lens of, I think, what's best for the kids. You guys got into this job, you know, whether you anticipated this or not, obviously not, but with kids in mind, you guys are all here with kids in mind, whatever the angle is. But hopefully, we can make this a decision which is best for them, because that's why we're all here realistically. And so like any decision, we should probably weigh the risk versus the rewards. Obviously, there's risks, obviously, there's rewards. But on the whole, luckily, and there are, you know, of course, you know, people in every situation, on the whole, the risks are minimal on the whole, you know, especially when we thought, you know, compared to what we thought this would be last year. Obviously, there's risk in everything, and anything. But the risks on the whole, I think, are minimal for kids, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about kids. I don't want to throw, you know, a ton of stats out there, because you guys can all read all the stats you want. Everything has been available for a year and a half now. But, you know, to me, I think we should probably be celebrating the fact that we have so few, sorry, so few deaths right now in Massachusetts. We've been in the single digits overall since the spring deaths per day from this. And, you know, typically, 150 people die per day in Massachusetts. Right now, we're in the single digits. I mean, that's total from any cause. So now we're in the single digits. That's a great thing. Hospitalization rate of kids is three per 1 million kids. That's a good thing. Luckily, kids have been spared for the most part on this. Obviously, you know, not everybody, but on the whole, kids have been spared. I think we should be really excited about that. So with that minimal risk, I think, to me, I think the most important thing is to try to give, you know, a road back to good mental health for the kids in our district. Like I said, I'm a teacher, and I see it on that end. And I teach high school in a different town, and you could see that throughout this year. Obviously, I'm not saying that masks are causing any, you know, mental health risk, but there's the collection of all the things that the kids had to go through this year. It took its toll on a lot of kids. And I would just ask, you know, try not to think about, you know, just your own kid's mental health. And not, like, I'll just look at mine. My three kids are fine, they're going to be fine. But, and a lot of kids are going to be fine, but a lot of kids are not fine. And I think, you know, getting, you know, making masks optional is a step towards getting them back on a state of, you know, having good, you know, mental health, to get back, you know, to being comfortable at school. Because that's, you know, they should be, they should be comfortable, you know, when they go there. So I don't want them to have some sort of, you know, trepidation about going back. So, you know, like I said, almost all kids are going to be fine from this if they do catch, almost all, and, you know, adults have the choice right now of being vaccinated, there's better treatments, et cetera. So, and we know it's been proven from around the world that schools do not drive transmission. So.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
We don't now get into a third year, a third school year, in which kids have to worry about, you know, a lot of things. I want them just to try to go back and have a, you know, somewhat normal type of school year.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Is that it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do not mean to be, I do not mean to be rude to anyone. I just want to make sure everyone that wants to get the chance. Thank you.
That's fine. Thanks, thanks for your time.
We have a Kelly and John Haley. We have a Kelly and John Haley. I'm not sure if it was two different people or... Oh, okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm Kelly Haley, it's my husband and John. We are Bob Jacklindway in Bridgewater. We have two daughters in the school system. And I'm here to discuss parent choice for masking and vaccines. Obviously, we're not on vaccines yet, but just throwing that out there. I'm a nurse. I have worked through the pandemic, and I've also had COVID. So I know the virus is no joke. I'm certainly not an anti-vaxer. My kids have had all their vaccines. But I did get very sick from the vaccine, and I will continue to have to get forced vaccines to do my job. So the way the kind of world is going right now is really, really scary, in my opinion. But my first point would be to remind people just a basic human interaction and how we learn. Babies read facial expressions, that's how they learn emotion. And that's deeply ingrained in human psyche. We're damaging our children, and we won't know the full extent for years throughout the pandemic. My pediatric hospital has been full of patients. They are not COVID patients, they're psych patients. They have, there are tons and tons of these kids all over the country. We're not alone here in Boston. But this is a huge, huge, huge issue. And I know there are a lot of people that think it's just a mask. It's not a big deal. It is a big deal to a lot of kids out there for many different reasons. Medical issues, psych issues, other, runs again, autism, all these things. And just to give you a couple of facts, I'm not going to overload you with facts. I do have some papers if you want to take them after. But children just dying by the year, and I know any child dying is scary and shouldn't have happened, but in the year 2019 to '20, there were 434 deaths from the flu and 124 deaths from COVID. Year '20 to '21, 213 kids died of COVID, and there were no flu deaths. So what the hell? I don't know. Again, I don't think that anybody should be dying, but the numbers are really, really small. There have been three major studies in the past year, and they all found the risk of death for kids from COVID ranging from 1 in 100,000 to 1 in 1 million. That's a Lancet report that said that. And hospitalizations hovered around three or four, just like our other person said, per million. So that's really, really, really low. Mortality rates are zero with our pre-existing medical conditions, such as leukemia. All the kids that did die from COVID actually did have an underlying medical condition. And Matt, you can research that, that is the truth. I would like my husband to jump because he's excited.
I just want to talk a little bit about masks, just with the actual CO2 levels. I was actually a molecular biologist for 14 years. Did do a lot of PCR tests. If you just want to talk about PCR, tell you how bullshit that test is. But let's.
Mr. Haley.
But the CO2 levels that you do start to accumulate over a very short amount of time can range between 3 and 3,000 to 9,000 ppm. The normal is 3,200,000, okay? That's a major, major increase. And over time, it just increases. People with like POTS, kids with POTS and other conditions, or asthma, anything, can be drastically affected by that over time. My daughter passed out four times last year. I'm sure these guys voted and tested that, okay? So it is reality, all right? It is reality. You've got to look at all the facts on all, everything that you see these days, right? Do you trust anything? So let's just look at all the facts.
I mean, the bottom line is, we know our kids best, and we really just feel that it should be the parent's choice. We know our kids best. You don't know my kids? I know my kids. So, and I don't know your kids. So you just, I don't think that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is now 7:18, which is the end of the first public comment that we have. Thank you for, members of the public, that came and spoke to the committee for that. Appreciate your input. We will have another public comment at the end. If anyone else that did not get to speak would like to, we do not have anyone else that has signed up. The next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we have approval of minutes dated July 28, 2021, and approval of general letter warrants dated July 29, 2021, and August 12, 2021. I will entertain a motion to entertain the consent agenda. Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons and seconded by Mrs. Holbrook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, any opposed? Thank you. Next, under the agenda, we have correspondence and recognition. We will first have the personnel report by Ms. Caderro, if you could please come up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Swenson, members of the school committee. This is the personnel report for Wednesday, August 18, 2021. At the high school, the following appointments are effective 8/31/2021. Alexandra Short, from 1-year appointment to appointment to math teacher. Victoria Leclerc, ESP. Denise Matson, from substitute to ESP. Colleen Daly, math teacher. Max Gayherne, history teacher. Lindsay Littlefield, biology teacher. Kimberly Bearfoot, ESP, health aide. Joyce Southworth, 1-year appointment to biology and teacher. At the Bridgewater Middle School, the following appointments are effective 8/31/2021. Luke Donovan, ESP. Sarah Marshall, ESP. Megan Trainor, from ESP to interventionist. Benjamin Kayla, from history teacher at the high school to history teacher at BMS. August Phillips, from substitute to instructional technology teacher. At Liberty Elementary School, the following appointments are effective 8/31/2021. Kelly McGowan, special education teacher. Annette Pointon, ESP. Michaela Drayton, 1-year appointment to interventionist. Merrill Elementary School. Christine DeBree, 1-year appointment to interventionist, 8/31/2021.
Thank you so much, Ms. Caderro. Do we have any questions?
No, there's more.
Oh. Oh. There's several pages. I was like, wow, usually it's really long. I'm sorry, continue.
William McKenzie, grade 3 teacher. Kenzie Martin, kindergarten teacher. Abigail Galudis, from substitute to grade 2 teacher. Julie Jodamkeith, from middle 2 to 1-year appointment as interventionist. Caitlin Russo, from building-based assistant to grade 3 teacher. Elaine Cavany, from grade 3 teacher to temporary appointment as interventionist. Shanda Cambria, ESP. Cassandra Evans, ESP. Nicole Finocchio, ESP. Beth McAndy Kennedy, ESP, health aide. At the Reina Middle School, the following appointments are effective 8/31/21. Andrew Sombalaski, science teacher. Darrell Lyons, language-based special ed teacher. Laura Nicholson, school adjustment counselor. Sarah Song, from ESP to 1-year appointment as interventionist. Michelle Hoopie-Wright, ESP. At the RMS preschool, Kathleen Gardner was appointed to ESP 8/31/2021. Therapeutic Day Program, the following appointments are effective 8/31/21. Janess Lazar, speech-language pathologist. Kelsey Larkin, ESP. At the Williams Intermediate School, the following appointments are effective 8/31/2021, unless otherwise noted. Dan Ham, from history teacher, 7th grade at BMS, a science teacher, grade 6 at Williams Intermediate School. Tyler Schofield, special education teacher. Eileen Freen, from Proctor, to 1-year appointment as interventionist. Wendy Blasavita, from academic year secretary to full year secretary, 8/2/21. Kayla Murphy, ESP. At the Central Office, the following appointments are made. Kristen Geer, full year secretary of facilities, 7/12/21. John Carrier, 1-year appointment to ELA interventionist, 8/31/21. Christopher Prescott, from 1-year appointment to full year secretary of business office, 7/12/21. Sean Smith, IT support district, 8/16/21. John Kemmett, HVAC tech, facilities, 8/9/21. Matthew Chow, custodian, facilities, 8/9/21. Matthew Tomlin, custodian, facilities, 8/23/21. We received the following resignations. The following people will not be returning for the upcoming year. Gabrielle Zisflat, math teacher at the high school. Jamie Dowenford, science teacher, RMS. Nancy Mendig, ELL teacher, Williams Intermediate. Jessica Harding, ESP at the high school. Thomas Reed, ESP at the high school. Lisa Washington Brown, Proctor at the high school. Julie Santos, special education teacher, Liberty. Emily Crawford, special education teacher, Merrill. Amy Sullivan, ESP, Mitchell Elementary. Austin Seadwes, ESP, RMS. Michaela McCarthy, ESP, WIS. Following retirements received. Brooke Condon, full year secretary at Williams Intermediate School, 8/1/2021. 26 years of service. Peter O'Grady, custodian in high school, 8/10/21. 15 years of service. Gina Savignano, ESP, Merrill. 8/31/21, after 16 years of service. Linda Anthony, ESP, Mitchell Elementary, 6/18/21. 26 years of service. Mary Brady, ESP, RMS preschool, 8/6/2021. 16 years of service. We have two appointments that I'd like to make introductions to. We have Sarah Moore, who has been appointed to the district's coordinator of family and student services. Miss Moore is a graduate from University of Rhode Island, where she received her bachelor's degree in early childhood education and elementary education with a minor in psychology. Sarah went on to earn her master of education, majoring in school counseling from the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Sarah has experience in both private and public education. Most recently, Sarah has worked as a school counselor at East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School. She has also worked as a child development teacher at Bedford Public High Schools and as a head start family advocate at East Bay Community Action Program. Sarah is licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the following areas: guidance counselor 5 through 12, worker adjustment counselor, and help family and consumer science. Sarah is also fluent in English and Portuguese languages. Sarah's focus is on the ultimate goal, individual student success, which can be accomplished through developing relationships with the students as well as their families to ensure they feel supported in all of the students' educational needs. I'd like to invite Sarah up, if she'd like to come up and say a few words.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I am Sarah, the new coordinator of family and student services, and I just want to say it's been a pleasure the last couple of weeks so far, and that I'm grateful to be part of this VR team. So thank you for having me.
Next, I'd like to introduce Kayla Barrios. Kayla Barrios has been appointed as the district's coordinator of diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI. Miss Barrios is a University of Rhode Island graduate, where she received her undergraduate degree in sociology and gender and women's studies with a minor in leadership studies. After receiving her degree from URI, Kayla went on to pursue her master's degree in education, the concentration in higher education counseling from Providence College. Shortly after graduating, she began a professional career at William College of Massachusetts as the multicultural program coordinator in the Marshall Center for Intercultural Learning, where she served in her role for two years. Kayla has dedicated all of her work in both her educational and professional career to DEI. Throughout her college experience, she aligned herself with opportunities that challenged her in focusing on strategies that would assist marginalized groups of people in the area. Through her own identity and allyship, Kayla approaches her work with courage, passion, and empathy. She is a strong believer that society, especially within our educational systems, should reflect, affirm, and celebrate all aspects of the students, faculty, and administrators' lived experiences. I'd like to ask Kayla up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kayla Barrios, and it is a pleasure to be with all of you and start on this new challenge. And I'm excited to work with you all and work with you families especially. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Caderro. Like, usually, August is so long. Thank you.
Can I say a question on my Boston accent?
Oh, Ms. Caderro. I'm sorry, Ms. Mrs. Laberinto has a question.
Sorry. Do we know, I don't know if it's calculated between teachers, ESP, admin, what our turnover rate is?
What our turnover rate is? I don't have the percentages, but that's something we are still actually in the process of hiring. And we still have some resignations that we haven't processed yet. So I would say if we have it for you, it would be a better figure at the next meeting.
It would be helpful to see our turnover rate this year from last year, if we have that. And then the other, my other, one other question is, when staff is leaving, do we do any kind of exit survey to them to find out kind of why they're leaving? You know, again, retirement, not retirement, others, why they're leaving?
Typically, they do tell us. We do have exit interviews. We have not sent them out, you know, documentation that we have not sent out. The influx of all of these paperwork with all of the new hires and all the retirements has been rather overwhelming for the department. But most of them, I can tell you, if they didn't retire, they have left for other.
Well, my question is, if they're leaving for this, why?
It's just for other opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Caderro. And I just wanted to thank Ms. Moore and Ms. Barrios for being here tonight and welcoming you to the district. So thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Caderro. Next, we have on the agenda VR happenings.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On Friday, July 29, we had our official beam raising at the new Mitchell Elementary School down on 500 South Street. So now the steel framing is up, and we celebrated that day. Many dignitaries. Many dignitaries attended and spoke. Ms. King, our school committee chair, along with Senator Pacheco and our state representative, Angela D'Amelia, were there in attendance. I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of the individuals who put so much time and effort into that day. Mrs. Holbrook, who is our official potty planner of the district, because that is not in my wheelhouse whatsoever. So thank you so much. Mrs. McDougall as well, who was taken on, took on that chore. Also Chartwell's food service for providing us a wonderful luncheon. And a special thanks to the Seini Bus Lines for providing us a beautiful coach bus that helped us with transportation from the Williams Intermediate School down to 500 South Street to help alleviate some of the traffic issues on South Street that occurred during the morning. So thank you to all of those that were involved. It is an exciting time, and I can't believe next year at this time will be already past a, hopefully, a ribbon cutting and finishing up our move into that new school to open up in September of 2022. So very exciting time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Also, I just wanted to share the school committee had, on Monday, August 2nd, 2021, we had its self-evaluation workshop with the school committee and Mr. Swenson. We had a working meeting, workshop to go over the past academic year as well as the upcoming year. We mapped out important dates and important subcommittee dates so we can have a clear calendar of all the dates that are not conflicting. We also looked over and discussed the capital improvement plan, students' success plan, and school committee manual and collaborated on ideas how we could move into the next year and improve. So I thought it was a great workshop, and I really thank everyone for being in attendance that night. And I do have a lot of notes to go over, and I'm going to provide that calendar and share that out with the committee as soon as it's finalized. So thank you from Mr. Swenson and the committee members for being there that night. Moving on, we have the VR community correspondence. I just wanted to note that in the past few weeks, we have received, I personally have received over seventy-five emails, phone calls, messages from members of the community. As I said earlier, I know the fall is a very passionate topic for the community. And I always enjoy when people are fully involved in the things that we're committed to as a committee. So I thank everyone that reached out. And if you haven't gotten a response and you have emails, I apologize. It was a flurry of emails, and I will try to respond to each and every one of you and not just an automated response. I try to personalize it as much as I can. So please know that your emails and messages, you know, we do read them and we do, you know, take them to heart if you do reach out to us. So thank you. And that concludes correspondence and recognition. We now have educational reports with Mr. Powers and the new teacher orientation and administrative retreat.
Hey, Madam Chair, Mr. Swenson, members of the school committee. I did want to just provide a quick overview of our admin retreat and new teacher orientation. As you know, we engaged in our week-long administrative retreat the first week in August. During that week, we started off with Mr. Jovalos for crisis prevention intervention training, so de-escalation training. That was a full day. We then, on Tuesday, engaged in diversity, equity, and inclusion, worked with our leadership and through our consultants. Tuesday afternoon, we began working on district initiatives such as our strategic plan, which we obviously refer to as our student success plan. Wednesday was really a full day of legal training. We had Murphy, Hesse, Tubby, and Lahane, who are our legal counselors, come in, provide legal updates, current trends in the law, and also led us in Title VI, Title IX training. Thursday, we re-engaged on district initiatives, again, working on the strategic plan. And then again, we just went over departmental items that needed to be covered. And that was concluded on Friday. Next week, we do a new teacher orientation on Tuesday, August 24th. We'll welcome all our new staff that can attend. Obviously, it's voluntary. We certainly encourage all to attend that morning. We will welcome them. We'll introduce them to all of our district administrators, talk to them about the teaching profession, the district as a whole. And then Mr. Swenson and I will take them on a tour of the district. There was something a few years ago, we realized that, you know, if you're hired, say, here at the high school, and you don't live in the area, you may actually never make it over to Merrill School in your entire career. So Mr. Swenson and I, through the generosity of Mr. Lucini and Lucini Bus Lines, again, arranged for a coach bus to take our new teachers on a tour of the district. So we stop at each site, introduce them to the building admin, talk to them a little bit about the great configurations of the building. And then we return back here to the high school, where the new staff engage with the Bridgewater Rainham Education Association, who hosts a lunch for our new teachers. On Wednesday morning, our new staff will engage in educator evaluation training that's mandated by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we use previous educational consultants to provide that. And then Wednesday afternoon, we actually in-house, as you know, were certified as ALICE instructors a number of years ago. So we actually lead all our new staff in an ALICE training here at the high school that Wednesday afternoon. And that concludes my report on admin retreat and teacher orientation.
Do you have any questions or questions?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Powers. A lot of time and effort into getting the admin retreat up and running and all of our professional development. He works closely alongside Mr. Jovalos and Mrs. Richards. So everyone who was involved, thank you so much. It was a great week of training. Very rare that we get the entire administrative team together collectively throughout the course of the school year. So it was nice to be able to do that. And Mr. Powers does a wonderful job too with our new teacher orientation. And we are looking forward to meeting our new staff and bringing them on the tour of the district next week. So thank you, Mr. Powers, for all that you do.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. Next, we have administrative and school committee reports, and we have the report of the superintendent with Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, throughout the course of last school year, we met collectively with our Board of Health Agents every Tuesday to go over our local numbers throughout the course of the week. We continue to do that practice throughout this summer, and we have been meeting with our both sides, both Eric Badger and Marie Fahey from Bridgewater Side and Matt Tanis from Rainham. This evening, I'd just like to report out on some of our numbers locally and also some of our positivity rates, especially with a focus on pediatric rates statewide. We'll continue to meet with our health agents right up until the beginning of the school year, and then, as the school year progresses, set a date each week to meet with them to continue to review this data. I will say also, just wanted to mention that I'll be talking a little bit about some of the webinars that Mr. Powers and I have attended over the course of the last few weeks that revolve around vaccinations and also some testing at the site level. So first, I just want to start with, and all of this information, I will let the members of the committee and the members of the audience know, can be found on the DPH website on mass.gov. And just looking at, what they do is they do a two-week timeframe of the collection of this data, of cases, of positive cases throughout our communities. You can get it by county and you can get it statewide. So we broke it down by Rainham, Bridgewater, and Rainham. I'll first start with the town of Rainham. The report out on July 22nd, it was a report out that took into effect July 4th through July 17th. There were nine cases in the town of Bridgewater. The next report out on the 29th of.
Was that Rainham or?
That was Rainham, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Rainham.
Can you repeat the number?
Sure. It was nine, from, under, July 22nd. That was count from July 24th to the 17th of July. It would be nine cases in the town of Rainham. I apologize. On the 29th, which took into account a report out from July 11th to July 24th, there were twenty-seven cases in the town of Rainham. In, on the eight, on eight, five, so it was August 5th, and that took into effect on July 18th through the 31st, thirty cases. And currently, right now, as of today, and speaking with Mr. Tanis, we have thirty-three cases in active cases in the town of Rainham. Of those thirty-three cases, six are pediatric cases, which means individuals under the age of eighteen. On the side, the Bridgewater side, on July 22nd, which again, took into account that same timeframe of July 4th through July 17th, there were ten cases. The report out on July 29th, which took into effect July 11th through the 24th, there were twenty-six cases. On August 5th, from July 18th to July 31st, there were twenty-five cases. And currently, as of today, there are forty-three cases in the town of Bridgewater, seven of which are pediatric cases of individuals under the age of eighteen. When we did, dug a little further into the state numbers, basically, we were just kind of focusing on, again, that, those pediatric numbers, which would be, you know, and really kind of that focus on students, that would be school-aged, five through nineteen. Back in July, on July 7th, there were report out of one hundred eighty-nine pediatric cases. Again, those, that age range of five to nineteen. On July 14th, there were one hundred ninety-one. July 21st, four hundred ninety-seven. July 28th, nine hundred thirty-three. On August 4th, one thousand five hundred eighty-six. And as of last week, on August 11th, there were two thousand three hundred thirty-two cases in that age range, age five through nineteen, throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Digging a little bit, yes?
Just a quick question, so I can keep my number straight. When you reported out on Bridgewater and Rainham's pediatric cases, that include children four years old?
That's under, that's under the age of eighteen, under the age of, yes.
That, that six or seven that you mentioned in the town, there is, that's zero to nine.
Yes, yes.
You don't have it further broken down?
So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be considered, not all would be considered necessarily school-aged.
Yeah, okay.
I'm hoping to get that further information from our Boards of Health next Monday, when we meet prior to next Tuesday's meeting. We just kind of got this information off the DPH in the last few days to try to get, trying to give you, try to give you some, some numbers.
At Monday's meeting, we did ask for specific of ages, so as specific as they could get.
Thank you.
Okay. As far as vaccine, vaccines are concerned, again, kind of looked at it as the district as a whole and by the individual towns. Right now, as a district as a whole, we have about forty-five percent of our students that are, are able to get the vaccine, which would be our plus twelve population, at about forty-five percent with one dose. And students that are fully vaccinated, thirty-seven percent. And again, that's district-wide. The breakdown by towns is Bridgewater currently has about forty percent of its students, twelve-plus with at least one dose, and thirty-three percent fully vaccinated. In the town of Rainham, again, twelve-plus, fifty-seven percent with one dose, and fifty percent fully vaccinated. So again, these are numbers that you can get right off of our DESI, I'm sorry, the Mass Department of Health website. With that being said, Mr. Powers and I have attended several webinars over the course of the last few weeks that revolve around vaccinations and different forms of testing at the site level, building level. We are exploring another vaccine, vaccination clinic, again, prior to the opening of school for our twelve-plus population, whether that be students and/or staff who may be interested in that. We also attended a webinar, participated in a webinar last week around testing at the, at the site level. They, right now, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are offering three options for us to do some testing at the building level. Testing would include, one, if a student is symptomatic throughout the course of the day, and again, would all obviously hinge upon parental consent. If a student is identified as being symptomatic throughout the day, they could go to the nurse's office and at that point be administered a test at that point. If it was found that that student was considered to be COVID-19 positive at that point, obviously, that quarantine would go into effect for, for that student. And we would have to, at that time, do close contact tracing if, if necessary for any, you know, buddy in that child's area that was under, you know, the three-feet mark. There's also another option for us this year called test and stay. So basically, this is if a student is identified as a close contact to someone who has converted, at that point, over a seven-day period, they can come down and be tested at the nurse's station each day. If they're deemed to be not positive, they can remain in school. And obviously, if they have converted themselves, they, they have to, they have to quarantine outside of the school environment. However, what this option allows us to do is to try to prevent the amount of quarantining that happened last year, which, you know, that was one thing that was really concerning to us, was the amount of quarantine days for students that were, you know, non-symptomatic and never converted. You know, some students, unfortunately, you know, some of them had to quarantine, you know, three individual times. So missing thirty days of school, especially in a hybrid model, was extremely concerning to us. So that's definitely an option that, you know, we're looking to do is that way. You know, if it is a situation where a student's deemed to close contact, we could have that ability to keep them, you know, in the building during that time and monitor them. You know, should they obviously become symptomatic or test positive, again, they would have to, they have to quarantine. At that time too, what's nice about the test and stay, during that time, however, I will mention, is that they will be expected regardless of what's decided next week. During that time, when they're being tested, they will be required to be masked, and that's a requirement of the state, not a local decision. However, it still allows our children to stay in school and to do things such, participate in athletics and extracurricular and the rest. And the third option is the pool testing, where they take random groups of students each day, five to ten students. They do a random test, and they try to figure out if there's any type of students that have converted within, within the building. And then, at that point, they would do a follow-up test to try to identify the student in that pool who has, who was, who had converted. And at that point, obviously, that student would have to participate in the quarantining, and we would have to identify if there are any close contacts to that student and kind of go through that process. So those are just a couple of, you know, different items that we're looking at right now. We were on the webinar, I believe it was last Wednesday, Mr. Powers got right on, filled out the form, submitted it. And I think by Monday, we were approved for all three forms of testing. And now the state is telling us that they're going to provide us some support in that, because that's one of the biggest concerns for us, is that our nursing staff was so overstretched last year with the amount of close contact tracing and everything else they had to do in terms of communication with parents and the rest. We really just would not have the man, woman power to kind of really do this on our own. So we would require some support in terms of staffing from the state. So this is one thing that the staff, the state is stating, that they would provide us those resources. So that's why we're very interested in this. Again, it's a situation where, you know, if it can keep, you know, kiddos in school during times that they are, you know, deemed to close contact and not have to do unnecessary quarantining, that's something that, you know, we're very interested in doing. And obviously, being able to identify students right away before it becomes a situation where they can convert, you know, others within the building. So that's just kind of an update of where we are with the numbers and some of the programs that we're currently looking at.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions from the committee members regarding those three things?
Mr. Swenson, I have a question. Test and stay.
Test and stay, yes.
I'm just curious, I know a lot about it already, but say I'm a student or a kid that's exposed outside of school, sports that are district-related or whatever, is there a way for me to, if I'm exposed, to still do test and stay? Or is test and stay only for kids or students that have been exposed while at school?
That question actually came up at the webinar yesterday in the afternoon. And I will give you what the state gives us a lot, more information to follow. So, yeah, but I, but I know that, but I know that they stated that the governor was going to come out this week with some updated protocols in regards to that. So hopefully, but that was definitely one of the questions that someone asked in the chat yesterday at the four o'clock webinar.
So, Mr. Swenson, in the interest of keeping as many kids in the classroom, like, what are we? I know you applied for all three, just so we would have that in. What are we leaning towards as a district, of course, based on parental?
Well, Mr. Powers and I talked about that today. Well, Mr. Powers and I talked about that today. I mean, definitely, options one and two are definitely something that we want to explore. But as we said today, if the state provides us with enough support to do the pool testing as well, you know, we would do all three. It's just basically, it would be our way of trying to identify kids early on that may be asymptomatic, not have anything, you know, in terms of, you know, symptoms showing, that just may be a carrier, and we're trying to prevent, you know, spread that way. So if we're provided enough support in terms of all three, we'll implement all three. We just really got to make sure that we're not putting any undue pressure on our nursing staff that's already kind of a skeleton crew to begin with. And we've tried to hire more nurses throughout the course of last school year and, you know, folks to come in for a one-, two-year appointment, you know, already have, you know, full-time employment elsewhere. There really wasn't, you know, that easy to fill those positions. So, you know, we just don't want to put any more undue burden on our nursing staff to be able to do this. Obviously, we want to be able to do it effectively and efficiently as well to make sure that, you know, we're getting the most accurate information we can, so.
Do we have other questions from the members? All right, thank you, Mr. Swenson. We now have the budget subcommittee report with Dr. Kowdowski.
Thank you. The budget subcommittee met on Tuesday, August 10th. We do have several voting items. Mr. Pacheco came to our meeting and made us aware of a catastrophic failure to the domestic hot water boiler number two at the Williams School. An insurance claim was submitted and denied due to age and condition. The domestic hot water boiler number one is in poor but operable condition and that will serve with the needed backup. So a motion to approve $85,592 to replace the boiler number two at the Williams School.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Dr. Kowdowski and a second by Mr. Dolan. Do we have questions from any school committee members?
Dr. Kowdowski, that come from Bridgewater's Congress.
Correct. So this will be forwarded to the town of Bridgewater, which has allocated the funds for capital expenses.
Great.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
The soccer goals at the All Perk Field at the high school are in need of replacement. Motion to approve $7,595 for two soccer goals on wheels. And we request at that meeting also that a capital plan would be developed on all the athletic equipment in the district.
Second.
Dr. Kowdowski has made a motion, and Mr. Dolan has seconded. Do we have any questions from the members? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I don't need an answer tonight, but it would be good to know. A soccer goal seems like something that might be inoperational rather than a capital. We're talking nets or we're talking?
Steel frame.
Okay.
Well, I should say capital.
Yeah, no, but I'm just trying to.
Well, yeah, just like Mr. Schoss did kind of an IT plan.
Right.
We kind of wanted an athletic.
No, that makes sense. I just think, I hear soccer and I think, like basketball nets, replaced every couple of years because they're just going to fray. In fact, if it's a steel, it's something different.
Yeah, they're original to when the school opened back in 2007, 2008.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. And next, we have some carryover cleanup for each year. Each year budgetary items that have not been closed out, such as purchase orders that the district has obviously invoiced for by the June 30th deadline, must carry over to the next year. So we have vendor carryovers and payroll. So first, I will do the vendor carryover. Motion to approve $3,263,313.27 for vendor carryovers.
Second.
All right, Dr. Kowdowski has made a motion, Mr. Dolan has seconded. Do we have questions from any members? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Dr. Kowdowski, $3 million sounds like a lot of money, but it's really Mrs. Macedo keeping track of our bills and making sure that, okay, we didn't pay it this year, so we've got to pay it next year.
Right, it just falls in that opposite time of year.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed?
And then, we have payroll carryover, which is for the payroll carriers that need to be carried forward into the next year. And that would be a motion to approve $165,062.66.
Motion has been made by Dr. Kowdowski and seconded by Mr. Dolan. Any questions from the members? All those in favor? Any opposed?
And then, finally, we have transfers between state function categories. And then, just a little summary, the information indicates the overall changes made to the state function categories for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. The budget, when we presented in March and approved it, is an estimated financial plan that is prepared a year in advance of its intended date. Once implemented, changes to the budget line accounts may occur based on the changing needs of the district. The auditors require school committee approval for those changes that result in transfers, which alter the original budget of each state function category. And that is detailed from Mrs. Macedo. So our original budget of approximately $78 million didn't change. We just may have changed the series, the categories, as we assign it. So Kathy, Mrs. Macedo, can I read them all if we have to do each one?
You can read them all as long as, you know, the numbers get.
Okay. So first, we have an increase of $1,000,5854.53 to the 1,000 series, which is our administration licensing fees and our technology. A decrease of $291,224.66 to the 2,000 series, which is our instructional services. A decrease of $503,984.87 to the 3,000 series, which is other student services. A decrease of $113,46 to the 4,000 series, operations and maintenance. A decrease of $1,218,315 to the 5,000 series, that was our fixed costs. An increase of $306,494 to the 7,000 series, which is acquisition and improvement. An increase of $1 to the 8,000 series, and that's debt retirement for school construction. And an increase of $814,221 to the 9,000 series, programs for other schools. That's all the motions.
Second.
Thank you. That was a motion by Dr. Kowdowski, seconded by Mr. Dolan. Do we have any questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Dr. Kowdowski, reporting out, and as everyone heard, we're like $1 to the 8,000 series. So this is just checking off.
That really killed Kathy.
This is how much we spent. We didn't over our budget. We just moved it around, and yes, we were $1 short in this 8,000 number, right?
Mrs. Macedo likes it with the rounding situation.
Oh, yeah. Like, you have to check off the boxes instead, I understand.
Do we have any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed?
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kowdowski. Next, we have policy subcommittee report with Mrs. Holbrook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight is the scheduled second reading of Policy DP Stabilization Fund Usage Policy. And based upon the fact that the first reading of the policy was completed at our last school committee meeting on July 28th, 2021, and that this policy has been available to the public as well, shared with the school committee members in the Google Drive, I would like to make two motions. The first motion to waive the second reading of Policy DP Stabilization Fund Usage Policy.
Thank you. We have a motion to waive the reading?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And we have a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
The second motion is to accept the updates to Policy DP Stabilization Fund Usage Policy.
Perfect. We have a motion by Mrs. Holbrook to accept the policy. We have a second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any questions from any members?
Just could we give a quick executive summary for the folks here? Where stabilization, what is it, and why do we need to update the policy?
Sure. The school committee, and Mrs. Macedo just jump in at any time, will vote on the annual deposit to the stabilization fund. And our original language was, will not receive $10,000, but it's based on budgeted amounts and/or available end-of-the-year funds.
And that's money we can put aside from one year to the other.
That is.
Like a savings account. Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, tonight is also the scheduled second reading of Policy FF Naming New Facilities. And based upon the fact that the first reading of Policy FF was completed at our last school committee meeting on July 28th, 2021, and that this policy has been available to the public as well as shared with school committee members in the Google Drive, I would like to make two motions. The first motion to waive the second reading of Policy FF Naming Facilities.
All right, and do we have a second on that? Thank you, by Dr. Kowdowski. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Holbrook.
The second motion is to accept the updates to Policy FF Naming New Facilities.
Second. All right, we have a first by Mr. Fitzgibbons and a second by Mrs. Leverinto. Do we have questions from any members? Mr. Dr. Kowdowski?
Well, it's not really a question, but this is one of the things that has happened over the years with the policy manual, is then when we approve something more unique to BR, when the MASC updates our policy manuals, they sort of fall through the cracks. So I don't know how we could have some kind of check system that our unique policies, that we could maintain those when they change them over, because you can't read through 600 policies. And I don't know, Mrs. McDougal, if there's a way to.
Thank you. So the policy subcommittee have now implemented a system so all of the policies are gone through set by section, and the date is updated. It's much easier to identify their policies versus our unique policies. So they're always dated when the policy's subreviewed and when they were approved by the school committee.
Right. But my fear is, so I log on and I look at Bridgewater's policies two years from now, and MASC has been kind enough to update, which we pay them for. And I look and I see Policy FF doesn't have anything that Bridgewater or Rainham, because who's going to look through every single page? And I understand what you're saying, that it'll be noted on the bottom, but if they forget to do it, how do we go back and make sure that our unique policies are carried over, that they did it properly?
They don't automatically replace it, do they?
So currently, they resubmit the policy, and then they acknowledge that it's been added to the manual. And then, I go in and look, and I know that it's correct in ours because it's been identified by.
So if they update it, they don't immediately, like, replace ours? Is that what, I think that's what you're saying?
Initially, they did, like, in the beginning, they.
Did a lot.
They. For all of theirs. But now, over the past, maybe four years, three years, the policy sub is taking it section by section.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. McDougal. Thank you, Dr. Kowdowski. Mr. Fitzgibbons, did you have another question?
Oh, just to, I believe we made it clear last meeting, it was always good to make things clear again. This applies just to the Bridgewater-Rainham High School facility, vis a vis either town doing what they want.
Correct. No, it's no.
It's all, it's all a solution. We can stray in both towns as to if they say, oh, we want to name, you know, the new, a new room in the Mitchell School, the Little Holbrook Room, then, of course, we'd all support it.
Thank you.
But if they wanted to name it for someone else, it all has to go through us.
It does.
Yeah, even though.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed?
And tonight is also the scheduled second reading of FG-R Rules Governing Rental and Use of School Property. And based on the fact that the first reading of the policy FG-R was completed at our last school committee meeting on July 28th, 2021, and that this policy has been available to the public as well as shared with school committee members in the Google Drive, I'd like to make two motions. The first motion to waive the second reading of Policy FG-R Rules Governing Rental and Use of School Property.
So.
A motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons to waive the reading. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Florence. Any questions?
Just if we could have a quick summary of what the main changes are again, although we follow these things diligently, perhaps the people out in the audience at home don't.
When we accept it, we will. Not during the waving, or do you want to do it now?
Just so that, so that everyone knows what we're voting on really.
But we're just waiving the second reading now.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
So at the next one, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got ahead of myself.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and the second motion is to accept the updates to Policy FG-R Governing Rental and Use of School Property.
All right, motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, a second? By Mrs. Leverinto, and then.
No, really.
Yes. So the Director of Facilities, Mr. Pacheco, provided us input with some language updates, and the subcommittee made some further changes. And it's just when you go to rent any, the gymnasium, for example, for basketball, there are guidelines that people who are renting must follow.
I guess, I guess where my question is going is, you probably have a lot of folks who have children who play, use basketball in either town, or perhaps use, you know, the multi-service field, et cetera. Is, or do any of the organizations need to worry that these policies will materially affect them? Or are they just cleanups?
They're just cleanups.
So they've been kind of basically spending as she goes, just.
Well, they're cleanups, and actually, Mr. Pacheco did add some new language to the policy as well. But when whoever is renting the facility, it will be, that will be included in that. That's our call, the rental policy.
From the building used?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kowdowski?
Did we change any of the fees associated with rentals?
We did not.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Holbrook?
With Leverinto?
We did change, right, correct me if I'm wrong, what was in the old policy actually said, if you were going to rent it, we were going to charge you for plowing? Right? And that was never really materialized in the past, and we pulled that out.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we did, because we said we'd have to plow regardless.
Yeah, right. The district has to plow regardless, and we actually, there was.
It wasn't fair to charge the.
Right, there was the ability for us to charge renters, but we pulled that out originally. We did pull that out with this new policy that we would, it's the district's responsibility.
Correct.
Any other questions? Perfect. All those in favor? Any opposed?
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Holbrook. Next, we have Long Range Planning Subcommittee Report with Mr. Florence. Do you have a report?
I have just a quick report. So on August 11th, the Long Range Planning Committee met with Mr. Swenson. Committee members present at the meeting were Mrs. Conrad, Mr. Marrera, Mr. Fitzgibbons, and myself as the Long Range Committee Chair. At the meeting, Mr. Swenson updated the committee on the district's progress on completing the five-year student settlement. Mr. Swenson then shared with us his proposed goals for the upcoming school year that will move the district towards completing the student success plan. Our next step as a Long Range Planning Committee is to select eight focus indicators that align with the proposed goals to evaluate Mr. Swenson on the upcoming school year. We'll leave on September 1st to finalize these goals so that we may officially, so they may be officially voted on as a full school committee at our September 22nd meeting.
Okay, perfect.
That concludes my report.
So we'll add that to our September meeting agenda then to vote on. Thank you. Do we have any questions from any members on that? Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Florence. Under new business, we have approval of payroll warrants.
Madam Chair, I approve myself.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll warrants dated July 29th, 2021, and August 12th, 2021.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Holbrook. Moved by Mrs. Holbrook, seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we have one extension. We do not have any other business to report on tonight. Next on the agenda, we have our second public comment. As stated earlier in the evening, during our first public comment section, we welcome any information, concerns, opinions for those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak, ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations, and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with a speaker or each other in deliberation or comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. The chair will now open up public comments for a period of twelve minutes for Policy BEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to approach the podium and provide your name and address. And please keep your comments to under three minutes again. We do not have anyone else that was signed up, so if you would like to come to the podium and just state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Jill Nunes. I'm from Harvest Lane in Bridgewater. I have an eighth grade son, been entering eighth grade this year, and two older sons who have also already graduated from Bridgewater-Ranham. As an educator in a neighboring district, I know that best practice dictates that we need to offer choice to our students whenever possible, because one size does not fit all. This is as true for masking as it is for reading. In that spirit, it is my firm belief that parents should have the right to decide their own children, whether to mask or not this year. There should be no mandates, and I'm against anything that removes parental choice, including any kind of mandatory in-school pool testing. The current DESI guidelines state that those that are unmasked will have to quarantine if identified as a close contact, but those who are unmasked will not have to quarantine. Why is this? Because it's what the American Silk Academy of Pediatrics and CDC recommend. But why is this the recommendation when it's a well-known fact that neither surgical masks nor fabric masks prevent passage of the virus? Coronavirus particle averages around one hundred and twenty-five nanometers in diameter, whereas a coronavirus particle, I'm sorry, compare that to bacteria's one-thousand nanometer size, which is what surgical masks were designed to block. A surgical mask whose purpose is to block bacteria does little to prevent passage of the smaller coronavirus particle. Additionally, according to the American Association of Pediatrics website summary of findings as of today, this data was current as of August twelfth. The cumulative number of pediatric COVID deaths among forty-three states reporting was zero point zero zero percent to zero point two five percent of all COVID-19 deaths, and seven states reported zero child deaths. And states reporting zero point zero zero percent to zero point zero three percent of all child COVID-19 cases resulted in death. Finally, on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the American Association of Pediatrics actually stopped updating the child testing data. Why would they do this? Because the numbers are so small in relation to hysteria over masking and vaccination that people are finally starting to wonder about the truth. There's no longer declared state emergency in Massachusetts, and there hasn't been for months. There should be no mask mandate, no requirement for in-school pool testing, and in fact, no directive at all that seeks to take parental control away from parents and give it to any government entity. Thank you.
I would like you to just reiterate. We do have only twelve minutes for public comment. So please, I don't want to take time away from people that would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get your name and.
My name is Lisa Borjeany, and my address is Alphataitica at Ranham. I want to thank you to the school committee. This is a difficult position. Your volunteers, you have to make a decision that is a public policy perspective and a public health decision. But at the end of the day, it's the school committee needs to do what's best for the education of our kids. And that means a mask mandate. The Delta variant spreads much more quickly and is different than the variant that was present previously. My daughter is entering seventh grade in RMS. She's vaccinated, but she's only, as we just heard, fifty percent are vaccinated. And one of the things that's really important to remember is that the fifth and sixth graders in that community are not eligible to be vaccinated. Leave it to the parents is a very common refrain, and I totally endorse that in a personal setting. But we are the parents for all of our kids. And we have very vulnerable kids in our population that we need to protect. And we cannot have herd immunity if we have fifty percent of fifty percent. School data shows that it's safe to get together with masks. There's recent studies out of North Carolina. Almost a million kids in the North Carolina school system with masks from March to June of two thousand and twenty-one. Six thousand kids got COVID, only three hundred of them from the school. In Utah, Missouri, Wisconsin, all have similar results. In contrast, without the masks, we're seeing cases spike over the summer. In Houston, there was a Bible camp with a hundred and fifty kids got really bad cases of COVID. The science is clear, the CDC, the American Pediatric Association. And here's the bottom line. Either we have our kids wear masks, or we're going to see infections spike, and we all know what that means. That means Zoom class. That means remote class. And I don't know about you, but I know that if we really want to care about our kids' mental health and their real learning, we need in-person. And the only way we can guarantee in-person is to have masks. Nobody wants remote learning in the environment that we have. So we want to keep schools face-to-face. That means masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borjeany. Do we have some else? Thank you.
Good evening. Kelly Dwyer, twenty-five, Fern Hollow Road in Bridgewater. I am a mom of three, a disabled veteran, and have made a civilian career in helping victims of abuse at their most vulnerable moments. I wanted to begin by acknowledging the extraordinary challenges we have all faced beginning of March of two thousand and twenty, and my sincere appreciation for this school and the community. I'm here to advocate against mandatory masking for the upcoming school year. I would hope that this committee recognizes and respects that parents are in the best position to know what is best for their children. We are called upon that regularly to do just that. As Americans, we've understood the freedoms afforded to us in this great nation, many of which have been stripped during this pandemic. In reaction to this pandemic and the unknowns, most of us, including me, complied. I was eight months pregnant with my third child and a type-one diabetic, not knowing or understanding how this virus worked. I did everything that was asked of me and my family. We were told by the so-called experts and our political leaders to trust the science. And the science has evolved, and we now know one size does not fit all of us, especially children. Unfortunately, due to our societal negligence, we are now seeing some children's immune systems compromised, especially getting sick, not from the coronavirus, but from usual winter viruses such as RSV, since their immune systems weren't able to develop this past year from all the restrictions. What I found most interesting as I watched my then-five-year-old son struggle with remote learning and other restrictions, I witnessed my then-three-year-old daughter thrive emotionally, developmentally, and educationally in a preschool setting with absolutely no restrictions, including masks, while she attended in-person five days a week. Not one outbreak of the coronavirus. We constantly hear how resilient kids are. However, we neglect to discuss the fact that they're only as resilient as their supports. In this past year-to-date, there's been a significant lack of support for our children. Social-emotional learning is failing. It's clear with the substantial growth rate of mental health issues, dropouts, suicides, and social isolation amongst youth. Most importantly, we've ignored parental rights to make decisions we feel best for our children. As an Army veteran, I believe in many things that make this country great, including having the ability to stand up and speak out on what I believe is right, using my voice that for those that may not be able to, which in this moment is my soon-to-be first grader. I cannot stand by quietly anymore. None of us should, nor we should watch or allow any child to suffer developmentally, emotionally, mentally, and physically for another year with restrictions that may make some feel better without doing any good. Teachers are able to be vaccinated, can wear masks if they choose, and the science has told us that kids are very rarely impacted, but you all know that. Kids have been mask-free all summer. They have traveled, gone to restaurants, stores, and playdates. They have been attending summer school, summer camp, sports, and dance classes all maskless. To put masks back on them again, her false sense of safety at this point is disappointing and unnecessary at best. DESI has not mandated masks. At this point, it should be parental choice to send our child to school with or without a mask, absolutely nothing more. If this were truly about trusting the science, kids, like my daughter's experience, would have had a totally normal year this past year. It wouldn't be having this conversation now either. It's hard for me to believe when people say trust in the science when the messaging and decisions are the complete opposite. Try to change my mind. I implore you to let parents make their own informed decisions regarding their children and their child's need, if at all, from masking. I hope you make the right decision, let kids be kids again. Thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate the pressures you all are under